The Hardin County Schools Board Team commits to keep children first, listen, be prepared, be professional, demonstrate financial stewardship, represent the entire district and support district goals, and support board decisions.
Okay, thank you. Recognitions, student and staff recognitions, I think John Wright took care of that.
Mr. Lovins asked me to share with everyone that when you few exit to your left, my right, you'll see a beautiful art exhibit by the John Hardin High School art students. So we encourage you to take advantage of that. There's some great work out there. So when you leave tonight, please take a look at that. And then also, one other thing, Mr. Chairman, I want to take this opportunity to thank the nearly thirty businesses that participated in our career fair yesterday for work ethic certification students. We have nearly five hundred work ethic certification students this year, which is remarkable. That's more than we've ever had. And also, those companies that sacrificed their morning to come out and talk with those students, several, I would say probably near fifty students that probably have entered, they shared that they have interviews scheduled for next week, and several of them on Tuesday when we're out of school. So just remarkable that our students are taking that next step, and also that our community is so accepting and ready for them to take that next step. So that's my bragging point, Mr. Chairman. I know it's up to what you asked me to do, so, sorry about that. So anyway, our recognitions this evening, so if you all have, would like to take a motion to pass those two resolutions together, and we'll go forward, sir.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the recognitions. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, first, we'd like to bring up the Lakewood Elementary School Lighthouse Team. Start our Do Our Stronger Together Awards first, Mr. Chairman. This is the Lakewood Elementary School Student Lighthouse Team. There's a plaque over there, Ms. Palmer, for these guys. This team of students was extremely instrumental in helping the school secure leader-in-me lighthouse school status from Franklin Covey Education. The lighthouse certification is a highly regarded standard set by Franklin Covey Education that is attainable by every leader-in-me school. As it is significant, is a significant benchmark, applying for this certification typically occurs three to five years after a school begins the leader-in-me process. Since its official launch nearly a decade ago, four thousand schools across fifty countries have adopted the leader-in-me process, while more than three hundred schools have achieved the prestigious lighthouse certification. Lakewood Elementary will maintain the certification for the next two years and will continue to foster its growth and proficiency in exemplifying a leadership culture and principles. And that would not have happened had it not been for those students that stand before us tonight. So congratulations, thank you for your leadership. We appreciate you all. That was a big celebration, Mr. Chairman, when they celebrated their lighthouse status, and very well deserved. We appreciate those young men and women. Ms. Holly Tabor. Ms. Holly Tabor is an East Hardin Middle School English teacher. She's done some pretty amazing things. She's asked her students to take an idea from a journal entry and make it come to life. The students started the Sunshine Club. With Ms. Tabor's guidance, they have set out a box where other students can ask for advice from their peers and get responses back. They have made bracelets and are giving them to students who are being kind to others. Mrs. Tabor took this a step further by asking her students to get involved in the TED Ed Talk Club. Students developed TED Talks about subjects on which they are passionate. The students presented their TED Talks at the Hardin County Schools Early College and Career Center and invited anyone that they wanted to invite. In mid-April, more than one hundred and fifty people came to hear the club's TED Talks. Ms. Tabor even bought t-shirts for the TED Ed Club members. HCECTV videotaped the programs, and they are currently running on HCECTV and of course on YouTube. Ms. Tabor stayed after school with the students multiple days to help them watch their ideas come to life. Ms. Nickle, the principal at East Hardin, says that Ms. Tabor truly deserves to be recognized for allowing her students to run with an idea to make it a reality. We appreciate you, Ms. Tabor. Thank you. Mr. Mark Nelson. Mark Nelson gets the Stronger Together Community Award tonight, Mr. Chairman. He has a desire to see students succeed. His generosity is evident through the many acts of kindness that he performs across this district. His support for HCS, teachers, staff, and students have propelled many of them to success in and out of the classroom. A North Hardin High School graduate, he is adamant about the continued success of students across the community. His stewardship and the ability to keep an open mind are dearly appreciated. He is passionate about our students' growth and is dedicated to helping the district move past its goals. We appreciate you and everything you do for our schools. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. All right, three very deserving groups and individuals tonight for the Stronger Together Award. All right, Central Hardin High School Vex Robotics. Come on in, guys. This is Team 6135K from Central Hardin High School. They won the Design Award at the World Championships. Just say your name.
My name is Tiffany Kugel.
All right, Tiffany, thank you.
Taylor Smith.
All right, Taylor, thank you. Let's give them a round of applause, please. As you know, Mr. Chairman, we have a lot of students that, we have a tradition of sending students to the World Championships, and these guys won the prestigious Design Award there, so we appreciate your efforts, and thank you all. Central Hardin GSP? Okay, come on up, guys.
Melissa Boakum.
Isabel Hobbs.
Jack Lehman.
Trinity Love.
Connor Wilkerson.
These students, Mr. Chairman, are Governor Scholar winners. Come on back up.
So, I'm Tiffany Kugel.
All right. It's a very prestigious honor to be a Governor Scholar. They will have lots of fun this summer through their program experience. Let's give them a round of applause, please. Next, Central Hardin Governor's School for the Arts. Come on up, Mr. Milby. This is Gavin Milby. I'm not gonna make you say his name because he's the only one from Central Hardin in this program, but Gavin is going to the Governor's School for the Arts, and he will do very, very well there. All right, John Hardin GSP. Come on up. This is Nathan Nelson. He will participate in the Governor's Scholars Program representing John Hardin High School. Thanks, Nathan. So let me tell you what this, what the TIP program is, and then we'll bring those students up from several different middle schools. The Duke Talent Identification Program works with students, their families, and educators to identify, recognize, engage, and help students reach their highest potential. The seventh grade Duke TIP Talent Search identifies seventh graders based on a standardized test scores which achieved while attending elementary or middle school. Candidates are invited to take the ACT or the SAT as seventh graders, which allows them greater insight into their academic abilities. In addition, they gain valuable benefits and have access to unique resources for gifted students. The following students have earned state recognition by scoring approximately at or above the national average of recent high school graduates on at least one part of the SAT or the ACT. Remarkable feat. So let's go ahead and bring these Bluegrass students up.
Jordan Hodge.
Say your name loud.
Michelle Rocha.
There you go.
Bailey Seedler.
Jocelyn Seedler.
Brayden Scott.
Okay, let's give them a round of applause, and then I'm gonna tell you about Brayden. I'll tell you about Brayden. Brayden earned Grand Recognition. Students who qualify for Grand Recognition scored approximately at or better than ninety percent of recent high school graduates on at least one part of the ACT or SAT. Only about four percent of all Duke TIP participants in the Talent Search qualify for Grand Recognition. Congratulations, Brayden. Congratulations, everybody. Okay, East Hardin Duke TIP. Come on up, guys.
Vernon Adams.
Brianna Blankenship.
Aiden Fulkerson.
Lucas Knight.
Ethan Williams.
All right, congratulations, East Hardin. Our next group is from James T. Alton, right?
Daniel Lozenberger.
Kennedy White.
All right, they're from James T. Alton, the Duke TIP Program. John Hardin FCC LA.
Hannah Crim.
Sierra Wallen.
Nia Johnson.
All right, congratulations, guys. Let me tell you a little bit about these ladies. Sarah Diaz was first place in Applied Chemistry, Applied Math, and Culinary. She earned a sixteen thousand dollar scholarship to Sullivan. Kiana Curry, Nia Johnson, and Alejandro Soto de Jesus, first place in Culinary Arts, and they also earned sixteen thousand dollar scholarships to Sullivan. In the Modified Career Investigation, Hannah Crim placed first place, and in the Modified Job Interview, Sierra Rowan placed in third place. Congratulations, ladies. Great job. John Hardin Dekka?
Lucas BB.
Jonathan Coffing.
Emily Culver.
Samara Downing.
Amy Wohans.
Josie Showers.
Giandre Sherrin.
All right, congratulations. These students placed at the state level and qualified for international competition this year with John Hardin Dekka. Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen. Very good. This is Abby Shader. Going across, Ms. Abby. Abby won third place in the Junior Duck Stamp Conservation Art Contest from Lakewood Elementary School. Congratulations, young lady. Very good. Very proud of you. This is Alejandro de Soto, no, Soto de Jesus, yes. Let's give him a round of applause, please. My job is done, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thanks to all the parents that came out and supported their children, and we appreciate it. That's what really makes us proud of our schools, having students that excel and do well, and some good scholarship. All right. Focus on academics.
These young ladies are from Brandy News Girls Who Code Programming Class at the ACS Early College and Career Center. And I have had the opportunity to be in that classroom, and it is truly amazing the things that they are learning. And, you know, we don't think of IT, you know, there's kind of a stereotype, an old-fashioned stereotype, that, not anymore thankfully, that IT is just for guys. Thankfully, those walls are breaking down, and young ladies are getting into that field and excelling. And I think the future is bright with this group behind me, and Ms. New is gonna tell you more about them, so.
So probably the best part of my job as instructional technology coordinator is that I get to teach a gender split programming class at EC3 for one trimester. And these are some of my girls. I think the community, EC3 was designed to be responsive to our community, and something that our community is telling us is that we're, they do not have enough applicants for jobs and internships that are female in STEM careers, STEM pathways, science, technology, engineering, and math. And so three years ago, we split off and offered a girls' class for programming in ninth through twelfth grade to see if we can increase our numbers. And so Molly's gonna talk a little bit about that.
So obviously, we recognize that there are differences between men and women, but we shouldn't think of that as a bad thing. We should think of it as a good thing and embrace it because women bring different things to the table. Women help with problem solving, and without women, we're lacking a piece of the puzzle that we need in our society.
So in the three years that we've had the class, we actually more than quadrupled the number of girls that are choosing that IT pathway now. I think something that I discovered this year in my first year of teaching the classes is that we need to do different things to engage girls and different things to teach them. One of those things is Girls Who Code, which is a national organization, always says you can't be what you can't see. So for myself as a young female, I didn't get to see many science role models, and so we've done some things in class to kind of compere or combat that. Dakota's gonna talk to you about that.
Every week, Ms. New would always Skype a scientist from any different career, any career that another girl would say that they were interested in. Like, one week we would have an engineer from NASA, the next week we'd have a physicist, and my personal favorite was the marine biologist. Her name was Danielle Quinn, and she's from Canada. She works on a project up there that studies sharks, and it involves coding and marine biology together. She has basically became my pen pal, and so any interest or questions that I have, she always keeps me in contact. And any of the girls that have questions about the career, the pathway that they want to do, that that person does, she will hook them up, and they'll be able to talk to each other and ask any questions that they have.
So something else we've discovered is that girls need to be, well, research shows, and then I learned this year, that we can't just hand girls a book a lot of times to learn something once they get to that age level, that it needs to be real, it needs to be hands-on, it needs to be something they care about. And so Alex and Summer are gonna tell you a little bit about their favorite part of the class and what it is that engages them and keeps them coming back year after year.
I started out this class as a freshman, and at first, I didn't think I was gonna like it that much, because I'm not good at math, I didn't think I'd be good at computer science, but I actually really enjoyed it. And it's actually pretty funny that in taking this class, I found that there are other people who are also more interested in the arts side of things. So with this class, it's definitely helped, like, promote me as, like, being more confident to pursue a music career, even though this class was only meant for, like, sciences, so.
I think my favorite part of the class is that we get our freedom to be creative, but we also get to learn something at the same time. Like, we have teachers that go through, and they try to plan a lot of games that go with the curriculum, and those are fun, but I think we just get more of a creative output here because we can create things like visual novels and just pretty much anything, apps, websites, and it's just really fun.
Summer has a Choose Your Own Adventure digital novel that she drew the art for and then programmed as well, which is really cool. And then we also have some, this is Michaela. One of the things now that we are entering, what is gonna be the fourth year of the class next year, is that we are starting to do internships, and we have a local partner, Advent FS, that is going to be kind of housing one of our girls for an internship. And then Michaela is doing an internship that I keep forgetting the name of. Will you come tell us the name of it? What's the name? Yeah, go ahead. She's gonna tell us a little about the internship she's gonna be doing this summer.
Okay. So the program I'm doing is called Summer at Discovery's Edge. It's summer-long, and it's with a director called Dr. Williams. He started the program. It was originally a program in the Air Force, but he integrated it to where students can also participate. I'm part of the VR route, so currently, we're working on, like, this commemoration of the fiftieth anniversary of the first moon landing. So we're creating a futuristic moon base as well as recreating the first landing.
So the only hard part about teaching this class is that often I'm like, man, where was this at when I was in high school? But anyways, but it's been really amazing for us. Someone else who wasn't able to be here tonight, Daily, she currently holds the record for, I think, the past three years, number of industry certifications earned in any of the IT and/or networking pathways. She's racked up, I think, seven this year, some in programming, some in security, some in hardware. So she's killing it. We're excited for what she's gonna do next year because she was just a junior. And then we're gonna be looking forward in the future, continuing to see how we can do some more creative problem solving, because this worked, or at least it seems like it worked, to encourage more girls, K-8, to make those choices once they get to high school, to choose some of the amazing opportunities we have in our high schools that would guide them more towards STEM pathways, so. Thank you.
Construction updates. We got an update this afternoon. Rob didn't come back tonight, John. Okay. Updates are, I think the shop drawings are starting to come in, and progress is moving along at the Lincoln Trail site, and soon to be starting, East Hardin's, I think, still moving water lines and things of that nature. I haven't been out there since last week, but it's, everything is still moving along in consideration of the consent agenda. Quite a few items on there. Most things on the consent agenda are approval of modifications to the Certified Evaluation Plan. And East Hardin Middle School's eighth grade traveled to Washington DC. This will be 2020, so we're, they made sure they got theirs approved in plenty of time.
Yes, sir.
And approval of the starting end times for the school, all the Hardin County Schools next year. Approval of the recommended revisions for the student code conduct, financial services, and we're approving the 2019-2020 tentative budget. We had several bids for garbage service, Red River, paper supply bid, child nutrition, and we're approving the schools to be in the community eligibility provision, CEP program for 2019-2020. And the meal prices, I don't know, they're gonna be $2.70 at all levels. Adult lunches, $3.75, and breakfast will still be free for all students. And we're approving the feeding sites for this summer, Central Hardin, John Hardin, North Hardin, and Cruisin Cafe. So oil lubricants, antifreeze, and we're gonna, if everything passes here tonight, we're gonna approve to declare the last mobile unit that we have, and it's at Bluegrass Middle School, and that we will not have any mobile classrooms on any of our campuses after that one.
We need to have a major celebration.
You think we should have a groundbreaking or a rock throwing or something of that nature?
Well, and I'm sorry, Chairman, but just a little correction, we do have one mobile unit left.
We got one more. Where's it at?
It is the Family Resource Center for James T. Alton in Vine Grove. It is between those two schools.
Golly, I thought this was.
However, we will.
Can we get it out?
Working on it.
Please.
Working towards that. So we are just one shy of being completely.
One, not one, it's between the schools.
We cannot do that.
We've got certified continuing contracts, limited contracts, and all the classified non-renewals and so forth on here. Anyone got anything that they wanna pull out or talk about, any more about?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that takes us down to action items, and we need to recess this regular meeting and have a District Finance Corporation special meeting. And what this will be for is sale of land at GC Burkett Elementary to the Department of Transportation, and as for widening of St. John Road, the state will be taking a small portion of the frontage there, which we planned for and assumed was gonna happen when the school was built. There was talk of it, so really not getting affected. I think we're gonna get eight or so thousand dollars out of the state, so we'll take that. And it'll just be further widening and putting extra lanes in on the road, all the other costs. We don't have any cost involved in it, they're gonna make the new connections and new approaches that's going into the school. So if I could have a motion to recess the regular meeting and have a special meeting of the District Finance Corporation.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I now call the order, the School District Finance Corporation Special Meeting. And like I said, that's for the approval of the sale of that land, so anyone's got any comments or focus to it? I guess we need to talk about it.
There's no magic, it's just a small piece of property.
Yeah. I think the price was based on what we paid for the land back per acre in three years or so ago when we purchased it, and they used that for.
No, there was a, there was a different comparable.
Actually, it was.
Yeah, there was a different comparable nearby.
A little more.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah. So we gained a little. Prices went up. Nita.
Mr. Chairman, I make the board approve Kentucky Transportation Cabinet's offer and proposal for the widening of St. John Road in front of GC Burkett School.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second to approve the sale of the property for the transportation widening of the road. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to adjourn that meeting. We need a motion to adjourn that special meeting.
I so moved, we should adjourn the finance meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn the finance meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, I'll call back to order the regular meeting of the Hardin County School Board. And next item is 10B, Approval of the District Facilities Plan. I think a lot of time, a lot of talent, and a lot of comments and emails and so forth, so that's where we're at. We can approve it, we can not approve it, or any thought you think y'all would like.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna say that I really appreciate all the work that the LPC has done. I know that you guys have met several times, and you've really had some challenges to face. But my concern with the option presented is that it does nothing to address the capacity issues at Lakewood and Creekside. So while it maybe addresses one or two of our issues, I just don't feel like we would be very fiscally responsible as a board to not try to tackle all of them. So I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that the Hardin County Schools Board reject the District Facility Plan as presented by the local planning committee, and return the draft District Facilities Plan back to the local planning committee for further revision. The LPC should continue to explore and address these issues that are related to the capacity in a more efficient and effective plan than what has been presented to us today.
Okay, I'm so sorry, but I second. I'm so sorry. I know that's a lot of work, and I know a lot went into that.
Well, the only thing that I would ask is that you give the LPC a little more direction.
Well, we've learned a lot while they were doing their work.
Maybe.
We got some projected numbers since then, so.
If there are some other options on there that the board's not comfortable with, then that would be good information for us to have going in.
I understand, and I'm so sorry, but I feel that way too. I just don't think, you know, we just, you know... Anyway, the motion and second. Is this discussion time, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, my feeling is this. We looked at budget numbers. We were being asked to make hard decisions about the budget. And in that budget, we have to project. We've been given projections for what the number of students we're gonna have next year. And in the coming years, it's looked similar. And we're gonna have fewer students. So things aren't coming back. They're not getting bigger. We're not getting more students. We're getting more holes. So it seems difficult to say we shouldn't look at that. And that, so that, we just got that projection officially now. We know that we're looking at at least 100 fewer students in the next year. And that's less money that we know we had to make a budget for. And we can't pretend when we make a facilities plan that those students exist. And that's what this facilities plan, and we need to inform the LPC and let them work with some new numbers then. That's how I feel.
Okay, good thoughts. We have... And the LPC has spent a lot of time. We've spent a lot of time, you know, being continually brought up to redistrict. Redistricting, we have looked at numbers after number and set for good amounts of time. And you can move some of these children anywhere you want to, but we're not... Still, we're taking them from one place to another. I've had a lot of comments that, you know, take some students from one area and send them to the next, or vice versa. Anytime we do that, we're taken away from one of the other schools, so... Just to balance all of the numbers and have the exact same number of students would be a drastic change in the whole county system. I mean, we would be busing kids from the north to the south or east to the west. It just, it's just not feasible to do any, I wouldn't say any redistricting. There might be some, but it's only gonna be some small numbers, so.
It's a population issue.
It is. It's a population issue. And recently, we just, of course, we gather numbers for next year's students, registration and so forth, and we're... 100 is conservative to say that we're not gonna have next year.
And we actually expect it might be worse.
What is that, 400 and some thousand dollars? 440,000 dollars or something?
So pretty good sized little chunk of change. We're... We included some cuts in the tentative budget. That was taking money out. There's not gonna be some money that's been going to different groups and so forth. So we've had to do some cuts there, and we're cutting everywhere, but just... We think, I guess, we think this is the best thing to do at this time. I really wasn't convinced of it until today, and we've had more talks about numbers today and things are not as rosy as we thought they might be.
And the other thing that I think is important for people to understand is that this is not something that's gonna happen in the next year or two or maybe even three. It's gonna be something that's down the road for us, so. We still got some time to look at all this stuff, so.
And I, to kind of tag on to that, it, we're definitely not gonna be something that's gonna happen next month or probably even six months from now or so. But at the same time, we have to be able to look forward to the time that it is going to occur and for it to be a plan in place that is something that's gonna work for the numbers. And again, I know, as everyone has said, the LPC has worked so hard, and we appreciate that very much. I know I've spent a lot of time, I know we've all spent a lot of time looking at all the numbers and all the different options and the possibility of redistricting and all the maps. And the, there's no doubt that redistricting is not going to solve the problem. And we have to make sure that we're using our finances in the best way possible. And right now, this just doesn't seem to be it.
Ms. Morgan, can we come up with a way to get our notes to the LPC? We've not ever actually met with them because we shouldn't.
Yeah.
But can we draft something or send...
And what's the...
I hate to make Kay be the poor messenger between the board and the LPC.
Yeah, that seems unfair.
Except I do want you to make sure that they know that we all really appreciate everything they're doing. And I hate to do this to them, but it's just...
I don't know how many of them said to me after our last meeting, "Please, please, please don't send this back to us."
I bet.
On behalf of the OPC, they have spent endless hours, lots of stress.
People are contacting them. I think it's important for everyone to know, these are volunteer positions. These people are coming to multiple nighttime meetings and hearing from constituents, good, bad, sometimes ugly. But I think the LPC would like that direction. I will be more than happy to take any thoughts back or recommendations that you want them to specifically take a look at as a non-voting member of the LPC. I have been able to share some information with them, but I think they would most definitely want the guidance from the board so that when they do present another plan, there is a likelihood it will be accepted.
Yeah, throughout my 12 years of being on the school board, I, you know, the LPC has met more times this, over this issue than any other time that we've had.
Because it's a difficult issue.
And it is. It's, you know, it's difficult. And we had, I think we had a good mix of folks on the committee and they spent a lot of time on it, but...
Well, for the county, I can tell you, this is not where we wanted to be.
Right.
You know, best case scenario, we would not have to be considering any of these options. But as you all have said, it's physically irresponsible not to look at the elephant in the room, and that is our numbers. I know I have been contacted by a couple of schools that are losing personnel. And when you start losing great teachers, that hurts. And that is what's happening in some of our schools. And they have seen the writing on the wall that that will continue to happen. Each year, they will continue to lose more and more staff.
And no, none of the options presented will make everybody happy, so it's especially difficult for you all, Kay. So again, I'm sorry to send it back, but I think that at this time, this is probably the best. In my heart, this is the best option for the board.
Okay, I have a motion to...
Please call the roll up this way.
Reject and send it to the, back to the...
LPC.
LPC for some more work. We'll see how things go. Voting, Mr. Segal.
So this is the vote to send it back. I vote yes.
Ms. Palmer?
Yay.
Chair votes? Yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Sharon?
I'm gonna vote no.
Don't blame me.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, motion carries, so I guess we'll give John a job again to... At some point here, we'll try to...
We've been apologizing to Kay. We didn't even apologize to John.
I'm sorry, John.
Hey, hey, Minister. We did, we'd like to see different options, pre-K, a. We'll certainly get everybody back together and see what else we can come up with.
Okay, maybe we'll share some more of the facts with them that we've come out with here in the last few days on enrollment and see if we can work something out a bit better.
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks a lot, and thanks to all the people that spent the time and hopefully they'll be brave enough to tackle it again, bars. All right, new business. Superintendent's report.
We are preparing for our graduations this year, but we have a, an awesome occasion at this year's graduation. We will have 46 students that will graduate with their associate's degree. And to the board's credit, years ago you all voted, or two years ago, you voted to pay for students who qualified for free and reduced lunches. And the GPA of those students has been about a 3.8 average GPA, and that's for free and reduced lunch students. And what you need to take from that, in my opinion, is that you're, you have provided these students the opportunity to be successful while living at home. And I believe they will have nothing but success in their future. We had a total of 1,349 total credit hours with a total GPA of 3.8, 3.18. 22 of our students made the president's list and another made the 20, another 20 made the dean's list. And so when you talk about this, it is just humbling to know how hard they've worked and the dedication they put into this, as well as the teachers there at the college, at EC3. I know Mr. Robbins and Ms. Wright both worked diligently with these students, assisting them with staying on track. So just very, very proud of their accomplishments that they've had there and appreciate you all providing that opportunity and our work with ECTC to make that happen. This next class coming up will be even larger. That, we're juniors this year and we'll be seniors next year, so I just...
We need to double at 44 next year. We need to double at every...
I believe we will. But I have had multiple parents to stop and say thank you because these students have been far more successful than the average college student taken off to college. So I just think it is the, an awesome opportunity for our students to move forward with great success.
It's a fantastic program. I'm really, I wasn't involved in putting it in place, but I'm very happy to support it.
The other thing, please notice the food sites that will be open this summer. Our next meeting, school will already be out of session. But thanks to Ms. Josie Crew and her staff, we will have multiple food sites. We will also have the cafe that goes around to the county delivering meals for those who cannot make it to the sites. And also, you will shortly have a newsletter coming home to our families. And Ms. Polly has listed all the events that happen over the summer. So if you are looking for your students to have opportunities this summer to be away from home a certain number of days or hours, there are multiple opportunities on there, from our history museum to the library, to 4H camps, to all the basketball camps, football camps throughout the district. So please take the opportunity to look for all those opportunities. And then also, we are going paperless this summer. We had kindergarten registration. That was a great success. It was very quick. And the rest of our students, while we did early kindergarten, the rest of our students will be joining the paperless trail here. So we want the parents to know that as well, so look for that coming out. And then the other night, with Mr. Wright and Ms. Polly's help, we had an excellent retirement ceremony for our teachers. And through that retirement, it was 1,261 years of experience that is leaving our district this year. That is significant. So those retirements will definitely have an impact on our district.
That wasn't just teachers, was it?
No, it was all different staff, yes ma'am. But 1,261 years. So I wanna say our appreciation to those who helped with that and made that a success.
What was the longest term in service for a teacher? It was 33 and a quarter?
32 and one-fourth years was the longest. We will be also giving out a service award to a cafeteria worker at Vine Grove Elementary, Ms. Brenda Moon, who has worked for us 40 years.
Oh, my gosh.
Bless her heart.
And Ms. Doris Sidington is still going strong, and she has 41 years.
Dedication.
Yes, sir, that's it.
Okay, May the 21st will be election day, no school, and...
Please get out to vote.
Yeah, May the 24th will be Hardin County High and GED graduation. And May the 27th will be another day out of school for Memorial Day. And May the 31st, North Hardin. And June the 1st, John Hardin and Central Hardin graduations, so. Seems like it was only yesterday that school started. Next week here, shortly, it's gonna start ending. So we've had a pretty good year, a few ups and downs, and just pretty much normal. And we appreciate what all the teachers, staff, and employees have done for us this year, so. Like you said, next meeting, we, school will be out.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
Uh-oh, motion to adjourn.
What flag might we look at?
All right, have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Didn't have a no vote there, Kay. That's good. All right, thank you all for coming out. Have a safe trip home.